Thank you for being with us tonight. This meeting has been brought to you in part by...
Let Grand Forks International Airport help you start your next vacation off on the right foot. Grand Forks International Airport offers flights to the sunny destinations of Orlando, Las Vegas, and Phoenix on Allegiant, and connections anywhere in the world through Minneapolis-St. Paul on Delta. Forget the hassle of long drives, parking nightmares, and stressful check-ins. The convenience of flying locally means less headaches and more time for you. Grand Forks International Airport, your airport, simply grand.
How many things in your house connect to the Internet? Let's see, computers, smartphones, gaming console, maybe your appliances and lights. They say that by the year 2020, the average home will have five devices for every one person. I don't know about you guys, but I don't want to be average. We're going to need much better Internet.
Midco Extreme Gig is here, life-changing.
Know what's in this box? Well, in case your crystal ball is broken, here's a hint. Safe, reliable energy, for starters, but there's also a commitment to this community. See, at Excel Energy, this is our hometown. So we're not just about making a living here, we're about living here. Oh, I wish I had wings.
In our community, we're always delivering. Excel Energy, responsible by nature.
As a farm kid from North Dakota, I was raised to face challenges head-on. But that was put to the test when I was diagnosed with cancer as a teenager. Now, I'm determined to help kids overcome illnesses like I did. So I started my journey at the University of North Dakota. With hard work and determination, I'll help others like my doctors helped me. I'm making my impact, how will you make yours?
Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is Grand Forks City Council's meeting room from 1A, 11th Street, under item 1. Welcome to the roll call.
Weigle, Doppler, Weber, Ma, Marshall, Sandy, Veen. We have a call.
Great, under discussion items, item 2.1, we're going to award bids, hopefully, for project number 8052, PSAP Dispatch Furniture. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Shannon LaHayes, the Center Manager with PSAP, and I'm here to report on our furniture bid that we put out at the end of March. We were looking for new furniture. We currently have eight positions, which some of them we migrated from our old center, and were unable to get parts, and some of the ergonomic aspects don't meet the needs that we're looking for currently, so we put out a bid. And we received three bids from Evans Council, Zibex, and Norbeez, and of that, there was definitely one bid that stood out from Evans, that gave us the best features, and also allowed for versatility, longevity, and really gave us the ability to, if we ever have to reestablish or redesign within the center, it gave us the most options for that. I stand able to answer any questions that you have on this bid.
Any questions? Mr. Weber moves approval.
Thank you.
Those chairs are used for lots and lots of hours.
Yes, they are.
You need good chairs there.
Yes, thank you.
Move approval, please.
Second by Marshall. The cost of each unit seemed quite expensive. I know office furniture is awfully expensive, I get that.
It is, yep.
There, the, I believe that it's probably, I haven't looked at all the beds, nor have I been out shopping for this sort of furniture, although I have filled two office buildings with furniture recently, and it's unbelievable how expensive office furniture is. And so I feel pretty comfortable knowing the complexity of the people and positions that you're working in, so I think it's great that we're going to get new furniture.
Thank you.
So there's a motion and a second. Mr. Veen, do you have a comment?
Just a question.
Sure.
On the bids, they were the, which one was the little bidder, as I'm looking through this?
The lowest was Norbeez.
Okay, so you're not going with...
We're not going with them. Part of it is that it didn't meet some of the specs as far as ergonomics. One of the biggest things with the ergonomics is that we have the ability to move the monitors and the keyboards separately for functionality, and as we're sitting there, we need that capability. And also, there weren't as much details provided as far as the IT aspect for being able to work on them, storage and cable management, so, yes.
In general, they, their bid did not meet the specification requirements?
It was incomplete.
Yeah, it wasn't complete enough for us to make a valued decision, and some of the aspects were missing that we needed.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post-name sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 2.2, request from RE Arena Inc. for amendment to their Class 8.3 Alcohol Beverage License. This is Ms. Dorsett.
Yes, President Sandy, members of the committee. As you remember, this was an agenda item that was tabled from the previous committee of the whole. A request had been made from General Manager Mr. Hodgson with the Ralph Ingleston Arena to serve alcohol off-site for events that they produce and promote. There has been discussions between City Attorney Mr. Swanson and Mr. Hodgson in the meantime, and it is our request, after speaking with Howard, that we table this item, so he can have more of those discussions, just to clarify language that would be needed in ordinance modification. He wants to have more discussions with Mr. Hodgson before we bring this forward to you.
Great. Sarah, motion to table, moved by Weber, second by... Certainly, there's no second yet. Would you like to ask a question, Ms. Ma?
Is it wise to follow up with Mr. Swanson if we have any questions, I guess? Either, should we ask any questions we maybe have now, or should we wait until the final language is brought to ask more specifically when the language is tweaked?
Well, I'm certainly available to answer any questions. The request that came in that was considered at your last meeting, I had concerns, I think I used the quote that the bar was quite low by using the term sponsorship. I reached out to Mr. Hodgson and discussed it, and that was not his intent. The word sponsorship was not what he was looking for. So we had more discussions, and we've actually shared some information with each other about defining what they're looking for. And what I told him was I thought that I owed him the ability to review what I might consider a definition of producing before I brought it forward. And we just haven't had that opportunity. The flip side of that is if the committee's not interested in going down that path, then I think both of us would like to know that before we invest in much more effort. But if it's something that you're at least still willing to consider or look at, I'm not promoting this change. In fact, I would tell you from our office, we think it's a policy decision, but it wouldn't be one that our office would recommend for either the Ralph or the Alaris Center. But having said that, I think if you do want to consider it, then he and I should have that opportunity to discuss exactly what proposals we might entertain.
And, can I ask a...
Yes, ma'am.
So with the addition of the Alaris Center, was the Alaris Center looking for the same type of, I guess, expansion of that ordinance, or did you just think we should add that while we were looking?
That didn't originate with me.
Oh.
I have had conversations with the Alaris Center, and I think their position is, they're not affirmatively seeking that, but if it's an expansion of the license provided to the Ralph, then that same expansion should be provided to Alaris. Both licenses are effect mirror images of each other, and to make change to one without the other, I think would be inappropriate.
Sure.
Mr. Weber, question?
Mr. Sandy, for clarification, my intention in making the motion to table was an indication of willingness to consider it a future date.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Mr. Veen?
And, Mr. Swanson, you would not only share it with the Ingleston, you'd share this with the Alaris Center too, before you'd bring it back here for us to consider?
Yes.
Mr. Weigle?
I would second Mr. Weber's motion to carry through and have Mr. Hodgson work with Howard to get this going. Didn't mean to be late to the party, but the other thing I look at is, and maybe you guys can shed some light on this, but...
So, yeah, there's no discussion after your second?
I would draw my second.
Draw your second, okay.
So, I would, how many changes to liquor licenses have we had in the last three years since I've been on the council? I think I recall quite a few. To allow, one, we allow vendors to do items in Town Square. We, I think we allow a lot of different things to occur with some of the liquor licenses.
I'm not familiar with anything on Town Square. You have had changes in your liquor license, with all due respect, most of them opposition to recommendations from the City Attorney's Office. You have modified it.
Yep.
Historically, we did a major, major rewrite of the liquor code a number of years ago, and we have tried extremely hard not to expand those classifications. At one time, the city of Grand Forks had nearly 30 different classes of liquor licenses. And over the last few years, you have started expanding those classes of licenses, and you expanded the areas of service and the type of service. And that was not the intent. My concern with this one, quite frankly, is the impact it has on competitors that have had their license for some time and are not affiliated with an establishment such as the Alaris or the Ralph. That's really my concern is. The Ralph license and the Alaris license are very limited and precise licenses that only they can hold, but they also have opportunities, concessions, that nobody else has. Having said that, it's a policy decision if you want to expand their ability to go off-site. In talking to Mr. Hodgson, it's very clear what their intent is, and that is, they don't want to be serving alcohol at events that they're not producing. And so we have talked in terms of getting away from references to sponsorship, and go more towards the financial risk of producing a show or an event.
Perfect, and I'm in favor of that. I think if a business from downtown would come and ask for something similar, it would pass on a 7-0 vote.
They already have that, right, so they wouldn't have that.
Right, but if there was something similar that came, that they wanted to do, it would pass on a 7-0 vote. There'd be very little discussion about it, besides input from Mr. Swanson. And I feel like if we don't give somebody else that opportunity, we're doing a disservice to somebody else within our community that wants to try something new. If it doesn't work, then we come back and we say, hey, no, it didn't work.
I'll go back to one of the premises of the overall regulation of liquor, and that is, it is a substance, although legal, highly regulated, and it has cultural implications that I have continuously raised to this body as to, how far do you want to go? Does every event need to have alcohol related? That's a policy decision for you to make. I understand the implication. I don't think this one really changes the character of what license they have, except it changes the location. When these licenses were set up for the Alaris and the Ralph, there was opposition from legitimate businesses who wanted the opportunity to compete, to have those sales at those locations, to cater or otherwise. The council at that time was convinced that that was not a good situation, a viable situation, so they went to a very limited license for each of those entities. And that seems to have worked for the number of years for both of them. Now, if you want to expand that, they go off-premise, pure policy decision.
Any other... Ms. Marshall?
Yeah, I share the concern about the competition with the Class 1 liquor license holders who pay a pretty hefty initial fee to obtain that license, and from the budget, a fairly comparable fee for the annual renewal, but they do have that very hefty license. I would like to hear what the bar owners in town, the Class 1 liquor license holders would have to say, if they have no concern about it, that might be another case altogether, or if this is not perceived by them to be a competition with what they want to do in our community. The only way we know is if we see what the draft looks like and determine if that meets with our approval, and if anyone would come to a public hearing and speak out against it, and so there's some value in opening it up for that, that kind of public comment. So I would be personally okay with it.
The only thing I would add to what you just said is, it is not limited to a Class 1. This would, in effect, give them a Class 11, a permanent Class 11 license that everyone else would have to apply for on an individual basis. And that would be a Class 1, a Class 3, a Class 4 license that currently would be able to do this off-premises. So it's not just a Class 1. But I've not had any communication from anyone leaving a phone message or contacting me in any way, raising those concerns. I raised them because those were part of the issues that came up in the original drafting.
Just a question of clarification, then. With the Class 11 license, would they need to come and to seek approval from the City Council for each and every event?
No.
Or you said the word permanent, so would that then allow them to ongoingly, maybe, expand to multiple events in the course of any given year?
What I, well, first of all, a Class 11, only certain classes can apply for a Class 11 license, and that is handled administratively, it does not come to the City Council. Those happen all the time and on a regular basis.
Okay.
What I anticipate here is that their definitional requirements of the license would be changed to allow them to go to an off-premise that they're producing. I don't think that would fall in the category of a Class 11. I think I want to keep that distinction. Now, if you want them to make individual applications, we can do that, I think, outside of a Class 11, but I hadn't planned on making the amendment to a Class 11 to include the Ralph or the Alaris license. If you look at how it's drafted right now, there's a specific subclause, or subsection that says they are limited to serving on-sale-only on-premise. They may not go off-premise. That would be the subsection that would be amended.
Right. Thank you for that clarification.
I think, I think we may have put the Ralph Ingleston Arena in an awkward position because they had a representative here, and they were informed that this concept was going to be tabled. And so they're no longer here to speak for themselves, which doesn't really seem fair right now. I will say that I've had fleeting conversations with a couple of people from the Ralph, and they assured me that they weren't interested in competing with any other local organizations. Their intention is to provide alcohol to events that they take the risk on, that they do spend money in order to get that business to promote new concepts and new things for our community. And so I don't think their intention is to go out and start bidding, you know, against other establishments in Grand Forks that would want to provide alcohol at the Empire or whatever other events that are already ongoing in town. They're trying to bring new business to town that perhaps other businesses wouldn't even know, wouldn't even know that there was the potential. And not only that, Ms. Marshall, to your point of wanting to hear what other, you know, what these other establishments, how they feel, it's on the agenda for tonight, and nobody's here, right? And so it is possible that when we get draft language, others will show up, and if they do, great, we can hear from them, but I think if there were a lot of major concern, people would be here.
My intent in speaking with Mr. Hodgson last week, and even today, was that he and I have the opportunity to continue our discussions, and to allow him the opportunity to provide me input in the draft, and that's where we left it.
Right.
So that's, from my perspective, unless you think I'm wasting my time, I'm asking the committee to table it.
I would second that.
Yeah, okay. There's a motion and a second to table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post-name sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Weigle, item 2.3, Bike Share Program.
Good evening, Council President, committee members. Thanks for this opportunity. As you see, you have before you a staff report that asks for your concurrence with an amendment to the street infrastructure program to support a three-year effort pilot project with Bike Share as the city as a sponsor. I'll try to go through a quick presentation for those who are a little bit unfamiliar with Bike Share, if that is okay. Okay? What is Bike Share? Simply, rental service in which bicycles are made available for shared individuals, or for shared use to individuals on a short-term basis. So, short-term bike rentals on a shared basis. There are dozens upon dozens of different systems that exist within the country. They have different values that they, by which they've incorporated these bicycle systems to promote economic activity, for health benefits, of course, to promote a greater connection to the community, to enhance their transit operations, their public transit operations, or even simply to promote the values of sustainability. There are benefits in many different areas, and each community is different on why they would adopt a Bike Share system. We'll talk a little bit about Grand Forks. It is a popular system. In 35, or in 2017 alone, there were 35 million rides with Bike Share. So it is something that has been around and gaining popularity. It is a new type of system, so what I'd like to do is walk through a video of how it works. You're going to get my soothing voice to annotate with this video. As you can see, it's an app-based system. A user would find the app, download the app, create a profile. Once they create a profile, they'd be eligible to find bikes on a map, on a digital map in the app, and also find the systems that are located. Once they find the bikes on a map, they scan the bike with their app. That will unlock the bike and start their ride. At this point, at this point, you can take a bike for a ride, you can lock it up and end your ride. You could also lock your, you could take a bike and pause your ride. Once you do lock it and end your ride, you can see from the system here that there is a cable that will connect to the station, so that bike is securely affixed to a permanent station. There is an option with the system that we're looking at that there's a second lock on the bike, so you can lock it not just to a station, but to another fixed object. So we've had community members working at, or looking at different Bike Share models for the past three years. You might recognize a couple of these folks. Some of them don't appear to get any older whatsoever, so special thanks to folks from our planning department, and from our community representatives. You'll note, one of the gentlemen in the back is the former student body president, Matt Kopp. We've had some very good relationships with student government, working with this. We've also had relationships with, all around the community, with Altru, Public Health, the city of East Grand Forks, city council members, as you can see here, the Greenway representatives, the cycling community around the community, the MPO, and several other private sectors have all been involved in conversations over the last three years about how to find the best fit, the best model of Bike Share for our community. So a thank you to all of them, and a shout-out to our Fargo friends who showed us this first version that they've been using. Interesting to note that they are on the verge, I think in their fourth or fifth season, they're nearing one-half a million rides. I think they're 70,000 rides away from one-half a million rides for their system, and already this year, with all this great weather, they've had 10,000 rides registered. So can Bike Share systems work in our climate? I think they're proving pretty well that they do. We've evaluated a lot of different systems. This is a dock system where you simply go from fix station to fix station. When we looked at this one initially, this was approximately half a million dollars in infrastructure, just to get started, and then about $180,000 in operating costs. So that seemed like a little bit high of a hurdle to make right away, so we continued to evaluate systems. The most recent that we evaluated up until this point was called a dockless system. So if you remember, we looked at that system as a body last year, and that is the system where dockless does not have to be affixed to any sort of fixed infrastructure. So basically, you can unlock the bike, as we saw with your app, and then ride it to just about wherever you want, and then lock it again with your app and leave your bike. The downsides of those, as we've seen in other communities, is they really can go just about anywhere, which includes trees and coolies and things like that. They can also be found laying around, which doesn't lend itself to the best community appearance. So that was something that we were looking at last year. Probably fortunately for us, the industry's changed and has fluctuated, and that type of system really isn't going to work in our type of community. So what we're looking at right now is a hybrid system that really is a dock-focused sort of a system, where you're, we're promoting rides from station to station, but also giving the flexibility for the user to attach a bike to another fixed piece of infrastructure like a bike rack. All of those can be indicated within your app, so folks who are riding will know where they can and cannot lock that up, and they will have to fix it to something, so the bikes can't just be carried away or taken away in another means. So moving forward, some of the goals that we looked at, that we wanted to be able to promote as a Grand Forks Bike Share system, is of course promoting healthy transportation, obvious. Provide affordable access to bike transportation with as little as $4 an hour, or $2 for a half-an-hour ride. This really promotes bike transportation for those maybe who don't have bikes or don't want to go out at this point to buy a bike, or maybe this is their first foray into biking as a recreation or as a commuting option. That leads to actually purchasing a bike and more of a bike culture. Number three, increasing resident visitor access to Greenway and Bikeway systems. We have a crown jewel here with the Greenway. It's probably one of the best, if not the best, around in the nation. I think it's recently related, or rated as the eighth-best park in the nation by one national organization, and we brag and we boast about that, but with visitors and some residents alike, we really don't provide them an opportunity to get on it in a bike fashion. They can walk, but we don't have bike rental services within the community that we allow that. So this will help getting people into the Greenway, taking bike rides on the Greenway, enjoying our great trail system. It also expands access to the commercial sectors. So things like the downtown, the 32nd Avenue, other different sectors, it can move people from one cluster to another. Number four, we support the city council priority of integrated transportation system. It all starts with good and safe roads. From there, we build on city's area transit, Dial-A-Ride. We've also incorporated taxi, of course, and Rideshare even recently, as well as a full, robust system of Bike Share multi-use path, or multi-use and bike path systems. Bike Share is just really the next step in a integrated transportation system. Promoting talent retention and recruitment. Things like Bike Share at this point are no longer the cherry on the top of what people are looking for as young talent. When they're choosing the community to go to or to stay, things like Bike Share, just like Rideshare was a couple of years ago, are no longer the extras. These are the things that people are looking for, making their decisions on where they're going to live on these types of amenities that are in the community. Further, the Bike Share itself allows people to get into the community more and to be more connected. It gets, for example, students off-campus into other areas of the community, gets them out of apartments into other areas. It gets even residents into different areas. As we all know, biking is one of those great ways to explore communities, whether it's a new one or even your own, being able to go through neighborhoods. It's much more personal, much more intimate than seeing a neighborhood or seeing an area through a windshield, but it's actually much more effective time-wise to be able to cover wide ground than it is to walk. So biking through the community is really a great way to explore and build that connection that causes people to want to stay and to have even greater roots within their community. Provide alternative navigation heavy construction areas. As we know, we are, and as the mayor says, we're on the verge of a million-dollar boom, or billion-dollar boom in construction. We have construction in several key areas around the town, particularly looking in the areas of downtown, Altru campus, and the UND campus. Bike Share is a nimble way to be able to navigate through these construction time periods, which we know are going to be the next several years. So instead of getting in your car, trying to park in certain areas like this, then getting out of your car and trying to navigate around construction, the Bike Share will actually give you a lot more nimble... actually give you a lot more nimble way to access that. And then finally, collecting and authentic data. This is one of the great things, particularly from the city side and from the planning side and MPO side, we get the data about where people are checking out bikes, where they're going, how they're getting there, so the different routes that are being used, when they're using them, and times of days and days of the week. So we get that data. We know, instead of going out and performing studies or making guesses on anecdotes, we have firsthand data of how people are biking in the community. That will really help how we make investments, not just with bike infrastructure, but with infrastructure overall. So Bike Share is a service. What we're presenting here today is a sponsorship request because it's a private company that's coming to town. This isn't a city program. It's not a city-operated program. It's not a city-owned program. It is a private company that is coming to town, and they are seeking sponsorships. Zegster is the company that we're looking at. They're the ones who have presented us with a funding request. They're the ones who have adopted the technology that you saw in the app. They helped with the, or are helping with the planning, where the stations go, how many bikes, and how robust of a system it is. In operations, they will be the ones who are running on a day-to-day basis. They will be hiring, I believe, two local contractors who will be operating the system. They will be the ones who respond to concerns, who respond to calls, they'll be the ones who fix bikes when necessary, or contract or contact local bike contractors for heavier fixes, and they will be the ones who will rebalance the bikes or move them around to make sure that they are where they need to be. And they'll help us with the promotion of them. On our side, we're looking for a sponsorship, as are other private entities and public entities, different entities around town. You can see that the main thing that we would be looking at is, on your left and your right, a mobile app presence and a station signage presence. So it's probably not our greatest concern to have our advertising out there, but it does give us some opportunity for some recognition for that. We could also leverage with some of the other partners, too, if they needed some additional space, to be able to provide them a little bit more of a boost. If it's less on our side, maybe more on their side. The bike itself, I think that the direction that the company is going is looking for a title sponsor, somebody who really takes great ownership of this program, and actually branding the full bike as a single entity. And I think the intent there is to make sure that they do have a title sponsor, somebody who's really going to ground this effort, and also to make sure that the bike is a really clean, professionally done. So when you come into the community, you see the bikes, it's a really professional, very clean look. So how are we going to make the Bike Share system successful? Already, we're making sure that it's broadly supported in the community. We want to establish clear expectations, and we've done that, so great help with our city attorney and with our finance department with the permit process. We are moving through the permit right now. There are a couple of questions on the insurance that we're working with, making sure everything is going to be clear before they set up any sort of operations. We'll make sure the permit is set. And then we want to make sure that the system is built for long-term growth, but it's really founded in short-term success, or it's a phased system. We want to start successfully, smaller steps, make sure it works really well, and then be able to expand out from there. So a quick look of what it might look like. So based on some information from the planning experts at Zegster, as well as our community team, we just did, we did a quick, not even a quick, we did a fairly thorough, actually, look at where the first 20 stations could go. Now, recognizing that our intention at this point is to move forward with about a 12 to a 15 station, and that is all based on the level of sponsorship that's available. But we've identified the 20 potential stations that can help serve that first phase, the launch in the first phase. As you can tell, we're really focusing on clusters and going from nodes to nodes and intermodal transportation. You can see in the downtown area, a lot of apartments here, plus a lot of visitors here, plus a lot of even residents coming down. I know that, for example, a family like mine probably wouldn't take our bike all the way down, ride our bike all the way downtown, and then hit the Greenway for a tour, but what we might do is take the nine-year-old's bike, put it in the back of the trunk, come downtown, take the nine-year-old's bike out, do the Bike Share, and then that would give us the opportunity to take about an hour-long ride along the Greenway. We think of, there are a lot of residents who don't live right next to the Greenway that could possibly do that. We know that people drive down to Lincoln Park, they drive down to Riverside Park, they drive down to downtown all the time. What this does is gives them one more amenity that they can do within their own community. So it really gives them a chance for an outdoor recreational amenity that they may not have if they live a little ways away from the trail system. You'll see, of course, a focus in the campus area. It's one of the reasons why the NCU and the Fargo project is so successful, is a lot of inter-campus rides. So making sure that students can get around through campus well. We hope that they get indoctrinated in using the bikes a lot, and then they get a lot more comfortable with taking them down to 32nd, taking them downtown, and getting out into the community. You also see some stations later on in the 32nd area, and a couple of stations in the Altru and the Alara Center area. Once again, we have conventions that come into town, great conventions and a great facility and a great community to host them. This gives them one more thing to do while they're in town, take a little break, maybe skip one of the sessions, jump on a bike and enjoy the community a little bit for absolutely very low cost. As you can see, the lower cost, user rates, $1 for 15 minutes, $10 a month for unlimited 30-minute rides, and $60 a year for unlimited 30-minute rides. That's half-price for UND students or low to moderate-income users as well. So if you were a UND student for $30 a year, you would have unlimited rides on the Bike Share. As somebody who is sending somebody off to college next fall, instead of paying one tank of gas, I would rather pay a $30 membership for unlimited rides. Also, as I mentioned before, the flexible parking, so there isn't a convenience charge that you would pay if you parked off-station. So if you didn't park at a station, but you'd park somewhere on a regular bike rack, somewhere, you can have that flexibility if you didn't want to walk. We know sometimes you want to park right to the front door. It's an odd North Dakota thing, but we really like going right to the front door. You can see in the bottom, that's an estimate. I don't have exact numbers, because again, this isn't our system, but based on the information that I have about sponsorships and about the scaling size of it, we estimate that the total investment to get things started between 50, 65 bikes is probably going to be in the 110,000 to 135,000 range. So therefore, you get to what the ask is for here, and this is an ask, again, to amend our existing street infrastructure program. The first year, $12,000 for sponsorship and startup costs, and then, and that as an amendment to 2019, and then budgeted within the street improvement program for 2020 and 2021 for $10,000 apiece. So if you look back at that number, approximately right in the middle, about $120,000 for annual operations. The request for ours would be about $10,000 to $12,000, or less than 10% of the total cost with that. And that's another thing that our community group really wanted. They wanted to make sure that it was widely supported, but the costs and the investments were distributed, so no one entity was really bearing the brunt of that and really feeling obligated by that. Our intent as we move forward is to make sure that we look at how successful it is over the course of the three years, who's using it, how are they using it, are sponsors coming forward? If it is successful, we predict that the private sectors would move forward. If after two, three years, it's not doing that, then we would have to reevaluate. If it is successful, in fact, as we move forward, we're already starting to look at different types of state, federal transportation grants that could augment the system and could potentially even replace what our actual city investment is. With that, I stand for questions.
Any comments or questions, Ms. Marshall?
Just a quick question. If we approve this tonight, are they set to get started pretty early this summer so people can maximize use of it? It sounds great.
Council President, Council Member Marshall. If we approve this as of Monday, they have an ambitious timeline. They would like to get started by July. I believe that they have a title sponsor who is either in hand or very close, so I think they're ready to move forward. And what we're trying to do is make sure that the city signs on for a sponsorship level, so when it does start, it starts with enough capacity that it is successful right away. What we wouldn't want to do is start a Bike Share system and have two bikes in town to use. It wouldn't be very user-friendly. So I believe that they have an aggressive timeline, and they would like to get started as early as this summer with a debut and a launch, and maybe more robust buildup to be ready for UND's return in the fall.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Weber?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. You touched on this, I just want to make sure I understand it correctly. First of all, Fargo, they're going with a different company, but my understanding is theirs is one of the most successful in the country for that company, Fargo's ridership and all?
Councilmember Weber, yes. I believe that they're number one for that company, out of all rides per bike, out of all systems within the country, and that includes Boulder, Colorado, and several, I think, several in Wisconsin, so very successful systems, yeah.
Things have changed a lot over the last few years, and one of the changes, in addition to technological improvements, the cost has come down. I don't think Fargo would do anything differently, though. It's been very successful for them. We're just coming in at a time where it's going to be even more affordable for us to do this. You've mentioned sponsorships. I want to make sure the city is not the major sponsor on this. Is that correct?
Council President Sandy, Councilmember Weber, no. They are seeking a title sponsor, which would probably be, my guess would be somewhere in the six to seven times the range of what the city's sponsorship is. Other sponsors that I know that they have been talking to include the City of East Grand Forks, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the University of North Dakota. In fact, the University of North Dakota Student Government passed a resolution last week, or two weeks ago, that said that they would support, as long as the university would also support, and as long as there was minimal investment in the number of bikes and racks and stations on campus to make it useful for the students. And I believe that they supported at a $10,000 level as well.
We're not the first sponsor, we're not the major sponsor, we're one of a growing collection of sponsors.
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
Ms. Ma?
Are there discussions for that larger sponsor that are kind of ongoing, that just haven't been finalized?
Councilmember Sandy, Councilmember Ma, yes, I believe so. I have to be careful with that. Again, this isn't our system, so I'm not privy to what the details are, and I really can't speak on it in behalf. I think what I'm speaking with is our relationship, the city, with the company itself.
Veen?
So it looks to be like this is basically a public-private partnership type of arrangement is what they're trying to do. You said somewhere between 110,000, 135,000 annually? Is that what you're looking at to make this happen?
Councilmember President, or Council President Sandy, Councilmember Veen, yes. Annual operations, that would be based on approximately 15 to 20 stations and approximately 65 to 70 bikes. So the number of, the amount would go up based on if the program or when the program is more successful and expands to other parts of the community.
So kind of a chicken egg, you have to have enough there to make it successful, or it's not going to work, and yet you probably need to build it. I imagine that's a part of the problem. So there's obviously the capital cost of getting the thing up and operating, somehow amortize that over a number of years, whatever, and then there's the operating costs that are going to be. What is the amount that the private sector is bringing toward this as compared to what is being asked publicly through sponsorships?
Council President Sandy, Councilmember Veen, I don't have those exact numbers. Again, we're not privy to all the sponsorship requests that are being made by the company. Public sector versus private sector, I probably wouldn't be able to answer that until all of the sponsorships are in, until they launch a program. I know the ones that I've listed off so far that I know that they're requesting, the City of Grand Forks is public, City of East Grand Forks is, I believe, going to consider public, Convention Visitor Bureau quasi-public, right, UND. So at this point, I think that you have a lot of different organizations that are publicly-minded or nonprofit-focused. Altru, of course, is another one. There has been interest in private sector sponsorships. I don't know, apologies, but I don't know how many private businesses that Zegster has reached out to at this point to secure private funding.
It'd be interesting to see the business model for how much you do, because if you add up all the number plus a prime sponsor, it seems like you could be over $100,000 already from sponsorships. And then, of course, I'm not for sure where the private sector comes in here, so we got a good understanding of how, what the business model is for it to be successful, because it's going to take, you know, all of us, I would assume, to make this happen.
Councilmember Veen, I would agree with that. I would agree with that. And I would think that the approach at this point is to get some core partners, to get it launched, as you mentioned, with good capacity, to make sure it's successful right away, and then be able to expand off of that or to draw in the private partners, the private sector. I think it's somewhere in the realm of about $3,500 sponsorship for a station and a couple of bikes, and about $10,000 for three stations. So as you look, if you would look at the map and you saw that the program would expand, you can start doing calculations about where the private sector would have to mark in. I would also say, we've been working at this for about three years. If there were a number of ready-to-go private businesses who stood up out of their chairs and pledged $100,000, $200,000, if that would have happened already, we would be, we'd all be riding on bikes right now. I think what you're going to see is that a strong start and a strong core investment that will demonstrate some success and demonstrate what the possibility is, the market possibility is for the private sector.
Now, I did notice the library, is it one of the sites? Did you look at that as a potential?
Councilmember Veen, yes, we did, absolutely. You'll notice if we look at the map, there's a big gap right in the middle, probably right where our residential is. There are a whole bunch of users to target. There are many sectors of users to target with a Bike Share system, and many communities do it in a much different way. One of the main things a Bike Share system tries to address in larger communities is that first and last mile, solving that trip from your home to a transit station. We don't have quite the same system here. So again, we've spent about three years trying to develop the best approach, that mama bear approach that is right for Grand Forks. We did look at areas like in that, the city center area, the midtown neighborhood, the Grand Cities Mall, the library, and that all makes sense. I think what the logic is at this point with the 20 stations, and this is 20, recognizing we're really only planning on going up to about 15 at this point, is where can it be successful first, and then where can we draw off of that? And to be successful first, we're looking at areas of town that are high-density, and there are highly visited areas. The library certainly is a good one. Remember, with every station, there needs to be a starting point as well. So if the library is a destination, then people would have to have a starting point near their neighborhood as well. I can envision potentially down the road, as we've seen before, as locations at things like grocery stores, the library, and maybe even neighborhood parks, that would allow people jumping off points from their neighborhood to be able to go on a daily use. Right now, this is more focused about short commutes within the day and about accessing recreation like the Greenway and the trail system.
Mr. Hagge, Mr. Weber?
President Sandy, thank you. I believe the Downtown Development Association, private sector, they're one of the, I know some of them are sponsored. As far as what Zegster's role in this, they'll bring the equipment and they'll be staffing all, taking care of the bikes. What was the term you used for rearranging the bikes?
Rebalancing.
Rebalancing, this is, too many bikes end up downtown, you need someone on the campus, they will come and haul the bikes and rebalance this. So there's expenses beyond the hardware, there's also the manpower and labor.
Sorry.
Would you like to start over?
Downtown Development Association, private sector sponsor, labor involved in the balancing of system to move bikes around. Sounds like a great idea. Thanks. Sorry, got it.
Mr. Hagge, you said that they're asking for $10,000 to $12,000 for three years, and assuming their success. Is there a definition of success?
President Sandy, that's a great question. I think they might have a different idea. They'll want to be successful enough that they can continue operations. Again, this is a private business. We hope that businesses that come to town who are good, solid, value-providing businesses are always successful when they come to Grand Forks. We hope they don't leave, right, like any business? So we have some shared interest there in making sure it's a good, positive system. On the community side, I think that we'll be able to judge things, again, with the data. We'll be able to see exactly how many rides are being taken, who's taken those rides, how they're being taken. We'll be able to measure We'll be able to measure impact as far as visitors coming down to use them. Those are probably just the quick ones that I'd have at this point. So, what is successful? If we see bikes moving around the community, and we see more families out, more visitors out using our trail system and using the Greenway, if the bike culture perhaps gets a little bit safer, a little bit more widely used because of the use of bikes and more awareness in that, I would probably consider that that would be successful indicators.
Great. Does anybody want to take action tonight, or should we table?
I would move approval.
Great. Moved by Marshall, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Weigle.
Just one comment. I would ask that you make that condition on review. City Attorney, we've not been provided with a sponsorship agreement. I will tell you that there has been a substantial increase in litigation nationally against municipalities that are involved. We want to make sure the sponsorship agreement doesn't tie us into a liability situation. So, what you have before you is a request for sponsorship, not the actual license. The application is incomplete to act on that. But as soon as we have an opportunity to review the agreement, I think it would be fine to move forward. But if you may, it's subject to the City Attorney's office. Your review, you're good to go.
I'm good with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Weigle? Very good. And also, as part of that, Mr. Hagge, I assume that it appeared that there were some electronic signs. Were those electronic signs at the stations? Or were they? I think we want to make sure that whatever signage they're going to have meets our sign code.
I think that, President Sandy, I think that sounds good. It's not electronic site, and we just have really highly talented graphics people here at the City of Grand Forks, so everything looks great. So, they're not electronic sites, and the stations don't have electronics. We do have specific requirements for citing them, and we will be working with all the property owners and with our city folks to make sure that we are meeting all the codes for the placement of the stations. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Post the same sign. Motion carries, very good. Moving right along, item 2.4, bids for project 7991.1, 2019 streetlight maintenance. Good evening, Mr. Crinko.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the council. We ended up opening bids this afternoon for 2019 streetlight maintenance project. This project is for redoing the conduit and the cable, as well as removing a number of redundant feed points and getting rid of some of our monthly maintenance costs because of that. We have a number of faulting wires down there. So, it's a maintenance project to get everything back up and running down in that area. We ended up receiving two bids this afternoon. The low bid was about 3.5% under the engineer's estimate for the project, and that was from Fusion Automation. And with that, staff is recommending awarding the contract to Fusion Automation.
Great. Comments? Moved by Weigle, second by Ma. Oh, you have a comment, Ms. Ma? Yes, certainly.
Do you, it seemed like the two bids were polar opposite of each other. Is there any concern that something might be missed either in the engineer? The engineer's estimate was pretty close to the low bid. Was there any concern about the other bid being so much higher?
No particular concerns were made.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Post the same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Item 2.5, bids for project 7799, District 717, paving North 62nd Street from Gateway to 500 feet north. Charles, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. Bids were received for this project on April 29th. We received six bids, which were open and read aloud with a low bid of $238,232.5 submitted by Tony Anderson Construction, which was about 2% below the engineer's estimate. North 62nd is a collector, so the city will have an 80% share of the construction costs with the remaining 20% to be assessed to the benefiting properties. Staff feels the low bidder is qualified to do the work, and at this time, we'd recommend awarding the contract to the low bidder, Tony Anderson Construction.
Comments moved by Mr. Veen, second by Ma. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 2.6, info update related to project number 7540, District 567, Oscarville Storm Sewer Pond Pump Station and Discharge Ditch. Mr. Walker?
Good afternoon, Council President Sandy, members of the council. What we refer to as Oscarville actually includes a Oscarville subdivision as well as a Sensky subdivisions and Lem Acres subdivision. That area is generally north of 20th Avenue North, situated between 42nd Street and the interstate. The area began to develop in the 1960s, and when it developed, it was outside of the city limits. It offered lower-cost lots for residential and commercial development, partially, I suspect, because of gravel and dirt roads that were out, that served the area as well as, there was no utilities. There's no sewer and water out there, although there was rural water. The area is now annexed. It has relatively poor drainage, and there's a lot of heavy truck traffic in the area. So, as you can imagine, the roads become somewhat impassable in the spring of the year to especially with heavy truck traffic and during times when it's really wet after a heavy rain. So, property owners in the area have repeatedly asked that the city pave the streets. We've been reluctant to do so over the years because of the extreme costs associated with not only paving, but the infrastructure itself. Before we paved, we would have to put in storm sewer, sanitary sewer, and water. So, shortly after the area became annexed, we began putting in water mains. And so, the good thing is, is the water mains are all installed in the area. If you recall, a couple of years ago, we put in sanitary sewer to that area. So, that's now done. So, what we have left is storm sewer and paving. Those are probably two of the more expensive projects yet to be done. So, we started on the storm sewer project. We hired WFW to start looking at that for us. And they've done some preliminary engineering estimates. And not only do you need a storm sewer collection system, but you'll also need a pond. And to get the water from the pond to the discharge location, which is the English Cooley diversion, which is not a lot of vertical drop, you'll need a pump station to get it there. And then, you'll need a little over a mile of improved drainage ditch to get it to the English Cooley diversion. So, when we start looking at project construction, engineering costs, cost of acquiring land, because we'll have to buy land for a pond and a drainage ditch, the costs of that project are about $3.5 million. It's pretty substantial. Preliminary estimates for paving would indicate that that would be a similar cost. So, it's on top of that. And that would be on top of the cost of the assessments for sanitary sewer, which were done last year, or completed last year, which was about $1.5 million. So, our intent is to bring to you at the next committee, the whole, an engineer's report as well as a request for authorization to acquire property, because we need to acquire property for the pond. And when we do that, the next step would then be to take the project to the Special Assessment Commission, who would define benefits thereafter. The Finance Department would calculate what the assessment range would be for each parcel and send out a letter to that property owner indicating what their estimated costs would be for the storm sewer project. With that letter, we would send an invitation to a public meeting where engineering and the Finance Department would meet with the residents to talk about the project as well as some of the costs. Our expectation is, is that the residents are going to somewhat resist the project. We know that there are some people up there who desperately want paving and feel that it's vital to their business to continue. We also expect that there's going to be some property owners who would say that, you go ahead with the paving, it's going to put me out of business. So, we'll have to decide whether or not we go forward with the project. And we'll also have to decide if we want to include additional city monies in this project to make it a go. With storm sewer, the costs are usually entirely passed on to the properties as special assessment. The gravity, that's for the gravity. For the pond, there is a city component. Our policy would indicate a pond of this size, there would be a 15% city share in the cost of the pond. For the paving, those costs are usually 100% special assessed, although in this case, there's kind of a classified street that you could call, and then make that an 80% city share. But those streets are relatively short. Anyway, we're bringing this to you tonight for some advance notice. We, like we said, we expect that there's going to be some resistance from some. There's going to be a request that the city participate to a higher level. And we just wanted you to be aware of that. And our public meeting would probably be in about a month from now. So, again, we'll be back next committee of the whole with the engineer's report to start that process.
Any questions for Mr. Walker? Mr. Veen?
Mr. Walker, the storm holding pond, that would be on the north end of this?
That is correct.
That storm holding pond, will that serve more than the Oscarville-Sensky area? But would future serve area further to the east and to the north?
It's possible that it could. We've been in conversations with that landowner. That's where we feel the pond has to go, because the entire, what we call Oscarville area is, for the most part, developed. There's some vacant lots up there, but it wouldn't be conducive for a holding pond. What we've preliminarily done is sized the holding pond to accommodate what we call the Oscarville area, as well as a few lots adjacent to what would be 27th Avenue North that could be developed. And then, the area north of that, when it does develop, it would either expand this pond or likely there would need to be a pond that would be built closer to the English Cooley diversion. So, you'd either expand this pond and build another pond or simply build the other pond.
So, the outfall for the stormwater would be then in a ditch that goes north, is that right?
That is correct.
And do we have the right-of-way for that ditch?
So, we have a potential agreement with the landowners that if we were to buy the pond, the lot for the pond, as well as what we need for a portion of the ditch, the remainder of the ditch could be in what's on the section line statutory 33-foot right-of-way. And they would be in agreement to offering an easement for that.
There is no road there now then that goes north?
There is kind of a dirt trail.
So, you'd still be able to have the dirt trail and your ditch in that 33 feet?
That's correct.
Right-of-way. And the area to the east and south of 27th, that was a strategic growth area, is that right?
Correct.
And so, the city invested a fair amount of money into the infrastructure there, right?
Correct.
So, this could be perceived to be something different, although it's existing, but we would be investing money, probably similarly, if we want to make this happen.
Correct.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing more about the project. Item 2.7, create special assessment in District for Project 8066, District 568, sanitary sewer for 19th Street from 40th to 44th Avenue South. Mr. Crinko?
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. So, installation of sanitary sewer along South 19th Street from 40th to 44th Avenue South. This sanitary sewer is pretty much being looked at for Edgewood Village First Res subdivision. Edgewood Village First Res subdivision is being looked at to have all the utilities installed privately. And this would be this sanitary sewer, which would then connect up to that, allowing that sewer to flow to the north. You'll end up seeing in the subsequent agenda item, we're looking at a engineering agreement with CPS. CPS is the engineer who's working with the developer for Edgewood Village. And overall, the approximate construction cost of this is just under $400,000. And with that, I suppose, staff is recommending approval of the engineer's report, creating the special assessment district, and directing the Engineering Department to prepare plans and specs.
Mr. Crinko, any comments or thoughts? Mr. Weigle moves approval, second by Ma. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 2.8, engineering agreement for the same project number 8066, District 568, sanitary sewer, South 19th Street.
As I mentioned previously, CPS is working with the developer in that area. So, we're, and CPS is part of our pre-selected list of available engineers to, or sorry, pre-qualified engineers list. And so, we ended up looking at them for negotiating a price since it's easier to coordinate with the same person. Negotiated price we came up with for design engineering bidding and construction services for the project was just under $55,000.
Mr. Crinko, any comments? Moved by Marshall, second by Veen. Any other comments? David, is this the sort of engineering project that if we were fully staffed in our Engineering Department, we'd be able to handle this internally?
We likely could.
Very good, thank you. Seeing no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 2.9, sidewalk list number one, project 8005, 2019, city sidewalks. Mr. Duckshur, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the council. The annual repair and construction for sidewalks is based on citizens' requests in areas the Engineering Department has identified as missing sidewalks or deficient sidewalks. This list contains locations identified by the Engineering Department. Each property on the list to be assessed for this project will receive a letter from the Engineering Department informing them of the assessment cost to be assessed to them. The property owner will be given the opportunity to install this under their own forces. If we have not heard from them in approximately three weeks, we will assume that the city will be doing the install underneath this project. So, at this time, staff would recommend action for approving the sidewalk location one for city project number 8005.
Any questions? Moved by Marshall, second by Veen. Seeing no questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, item 210, engineering agreement, project number 8071, North End Reliever Force Main. Mr. Walker?
Good afternoon. So, this project involves identifying a feasible route and a preliminary cost estimate, or probable cost estimate, to install a reliever force main on our wastewater force main system. Currently, there's a large area in the northeast corner of the city, actually. This map. This map shows, let me pull this down a little bit. This is a new system for us. So, currently, this lift station five area, this lift station four area, this lift station nine area, and this lift station 11 area all flow into a force main that travels this route, this red line. The only way for these lift stations to get the wastewater from these areas is to go through this force main. Other areas of our force main system have the ability to take different routes, most areas. For instance, there is a force main that runs all the way along here out to the wastewater treatment plant. There is an alternate route that can go through this way. There's an alternate route that can go through this way. This area is one of the areas that would be the most problematic if we were to get a break in this force main line. The intent of this project would be to look and see what it would take to put a reliever force main, connect it on to this force main at this location, and take it over to Columbia at this location. That way, if there was a break in our main force main... That way, if there was a break in our main force main, you could use this alternate route. In the absence of having another way to get rid of the sewage that is collected in these stations, you would either have to pump it into the stormwater or to the storm sewer and hold it there, in hopes that we don't get a rain before we can pump it back out, or do an emergency discharge into the river. So, it would be our recommendation that we would approve this agreement with Webster-Foster Weston to study this force main route, in hopes of that this study would be used to plan and budget for the design and construction of this reliever force main in the future.
Any questions for Mr. Walker? Seeing none, yes, Mr. Weber?
So the cost for this study would all be borne by the city?
That is correct, yes. It would come out of the wastewater budget.
And if it's built, if the study is affirmative and we move forward with building it, is it special assessed, then?
No, typically, we would not special assess force mains or pump stations. That would be something that would be funded through the monies collected on the monthly wastewater bill.
Right. All right, thank you.
Moved by Veen, second by Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item 211, engineering agreement, Project Number 8070, ARVT replacement between Columbia Road and Lift Station 32. Mr. Walker.
So, in the past, we've done a couple of projects before where we replaced some Ts in one of our force mains. And what we're doing here is we're replacing Ts in a force main that was installed in 1988. The force main is a 36-inch diameter, and is one of our main force mains that delivers wastewater from the city out to the wastewater treatment plant. In 1988, the fittings were manufactured out of steel, and they were epoxy coated. And over the years, we have found that the epoxy coating has weakened and causing the steel to corrode, and in some cases, the Ts failed, and we had to replace them under emergency conditions. The force main that we're looking at, doing the T replacement on, is along 17th Avenue, going from Columbia Road all the way out to Lift Station 32, which is located near 48th Street. The project would replace about five or six Ts and air release valves on them, and the replacement part would include a length of 36-inch PVC pipe with a stainless steel saddle attached to it that would replace what the T used to do. So, those parts weren't available in 1988 when the force main was originally installed, and so by using PVC and stainless steel, they're less, well, they're not subject to corrosion and would last a much longer period of time than the steel Ts have. So with that, our recommendation is to approve the agreement with Webster-Foster Weston for Design Bidding and Construction Administrative Engineering Services in the amount of $70,971.
Any comments or questions, Mr. Veen?
Just, what is the pipe, what type of pipe is there in this section?
This is what's called, we commonly refer to as Hobos pipe, that was the manufacturer, is actually fiberglass reinforced plastic pipe. It turned out to be a very durable pipe. It is the same type of pipe that was used to relocate the stormwater force main at the Altrude facility.
Any other thoughts or comments? Moved by Veen, second by Weigl. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Item 212, purchase of Vector Truck for Wastewater Collections Department. Ms. Barbie, good evening.
Good evening, President Councilman Sandy and members of the committee. So the staff has been looking at purchasing a new jetter, vacuum truck, and so they've looked at four different companies. There's really not many more that actually produce a Vector jetter truck. And so, they looked at Vaccon, excuse me, Vector, Aquatech, and Camel over the last year. So they had the vendors come in, had the trucks come in, and they looked at which one they'd possibly purchase, if and when we were able to purchase a new one. The staff has worked currently with a Vector truck, and they have a Vaccon truck, and those are two of the more popular ones that are used throughout the state of North Dakota. And so, our current Vector truck is 13 years old, and a system of our capacity, we have about 200 miles of sanitary sewer line that they maintain. We would normally look at replacement about every 10 years. The staff has started to notice wear and tear and had to do repairs, warranties off on the actual tank itself. So we're recommending, because it takes about a year to actually build the truck, that we're recommending working on purchasing one now, so that we'll have one ready for next season to be able to utilize. The staff is also asking at this point to waive the requirement to bid and to be able to purchase the Vector truck itself. They feel it's a little bit more durable, they are comfortable with how it operates, and then it has a rapid deploy boom that no other company produces, so it's a safety issue and actually helps them operate more efficiently. So we've worked a little bit with Sourcewell, or Vector, and they're part of the Sourcewell, formerly NJPA, competitive bid process, so we would actually ask to go ahead and work with sanitation products with the quote that they've given us through this competitive bid, and then purchase directly with them. And that's for the $394,118 is what it would cost us to purchase this for this year.
Thank you. Questions, Mr. Veen?
So I understand with Sourcewell, they actually are competitively bid.
They are.
Because even though we would work with them, those bids were done by Sourcewell, as we learned here a little bit ago. So it isn't like we're just selecting somebody and going with it. It meets the requirements of a competitive bid and still is allowing us to get the vehicle that we want.
Yes, correct. Absolutely. Because they're so specific, we would actually request to purchase the Vector truck.
So it meets the bidding requirements that's required through state statute, allow us to be able to do that. So if that's the truth, which I believe it is.
I believe it is.
I would make the motion to approve this.
Moved by Veen, second by Marshall. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Barbie. Item 213, declaration of surplus property, Part A, Public Works Operations Surplus Equipment. Good evening, Ms. Amison.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. The Public Works Department plans to sell outdated or obsolete equipment and parts. The city has an existing agreement for an online auction site to sell equipment that's been declared surplus, and individuals, private or public entities, are then able to independently register and bid on the surplus items utilizing this online auction. The process is outlined in the staff report, along with the items for surplus and sale. And with that, we request that the items listed be declared surplus and authorize staff to proceed with sale, scrap, or disposal of equipment according to established policies and procedures, and in coordination with the Finance Department.
Thank you. Any comments or thoughts? Should we get rid of the stuff? Yeah, okay. Mr. Weigl moves approval, second by Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Part B, Public Transportation Fuel Truck. Good evening, Mr. Bergman.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. Again, we have a disposition that we have to get rid of the propane tank that we no longer use for our building, since we're having the remodel done and going to natural gas heat out there. So what we would do is put this up for gov deals to sell it, and the profits then would be turned around and used back into the building for completion of the construction.
Moved by Marshall, second by Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item 214, Cities Area Transit Title VI and LEP Plan Update. Mr. Bergman.
Again, President Sandy and members of the committee, this is one of our many policies that you're going to be seeing coming across your desks this year. This one here happens to do our Title VI and LEP, which is a limited English proficiency plan that we have to have, in other words, making sure that we have enough documents in Spanish or whatever language is available that we need to have out there. Again, we have to have these updated every couple of years with our federal transit administration partners, and so we wanted to bring this forward and get approval.
Any thoughts, Mr. Weber? Moves approval. Is there a second? By Mr. Weigl. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Until next time. Item 215, the grit chamber needs to be rehabbed at the wastewater treatment plant.
Good evening. This one's really simple, it's just the grit chamber is worn out. It actually helps solid settle out in the process, so the sand, gravel, whatever else is currently being transported in the water that wasn't already removed, will actually settle here and then we'll remove it. But the chamber itself is worn, and so it's allowing more to go through, which actually causes deterioration on some of the pumps, et cetera. So staff has recommended at this point that we just replace what we currently have, and therefore, we wouldn't bid out that equipment, we would just replace it with a sole source purchase from the vendor, the Coopers Water Vendor Company, of $23,000.
Mr. Veen, should we get rid of the grit?
Yep.
Moved by Veen, second by Marshall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Weigl, moves we adjourn. Second by Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We adjourn.
This meeting has been brought to you in part by...
Let Grand Forks International Airport help you start your next vacation off on the right foot. Grand Forks International Airport offers flights to the sunny destinations of Orlando, Las Vegas, and Phoenix on Allegiant, and connections anywhere in the world through Minneapolis-St. Paul on Delta. Forget the hassle of long drives, parking nightmares, and stressful check-ins. The convenience of flying locally means less headaches and more time for you. Grand Forks International Airport, your airport, simply grand.